We're going to call a regular meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for October 22nd, 2013 to order. Will everybody stand and join us in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I believe in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The agenda is before us. First thing, is there any additions or deletions by fellow board members or staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'll have a road five, temporary no parking.
Okay, anything else? Okay, then the agenda will stand as presented. For the audience, those who are going to speak tonight, let you know that our meetings are audio and videotaped, and the videotapes are posted online. So the residents that cannot make the meetings, they can watch the meetings. So if you're going to speak tonight, we only ask that you sign into the sheet in the back, and then you come to the podium and give your name and address to the new fiscal officer. When he gives you the nod that he has got your information, you can go ahead and address the board, and we have a section for the agenda for that. The first order of business tonight is the sheriff's report. There's nothing on the report. Does anybody in the audience tonight have anything specifically to address our sheriff's detective that's here tonight? Okay, that'll close the sheriff's report. Nothing on the detective report. We'll go to new business, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one are the false alarms.
Also move. Second, Mr. Lino. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Item number two is the Pro Football Hall of Fame Marathon, which I will turn over to Mr. Iasino.
Yes, I received an email, which I'm looking for right now, from Stephanie Gallagher from City of Canton. There's going to be a meeting on October 31st for this April Pro Football Hall of Fame Marathon, and I just thought I wanted to share it with the board so they are aware of what's going on with some of the problems we've had in the past with the marathons. There are some maps towards the back of this. They're not real clear probably on here, but we have a smaller portion this year. Broad Avenue down to the Hall of Fame through a couple of side streets. It's nowhere near where we were with the past two marathons. It's a totally different route, and it's a totally different race course.
This is something where they've already put up money, lock it escrow to ensure that services are going to be compensated. Much better planning is what I've heard to this point.
Yeah, he's not even promoting it yet until he knows he got everybody on board.
I know he has contacted me several times about meeting at different stages along the way too, so you can keep me informed about what's running on through this too. So I know the outreach has been a lot better because the last marathon race, I don't think I ever spoke with him to be able to add it.
No, I agree. I agree. We had some problems the last time.
Mine was limited, I'll be happy to report.
I just wanted to update you, let you know that this is going on.
And I plan on meeting with him sometime next week. Ramon, should? What, Joe, what do you think?
Friday, the 31st, over on, at the fire station on Cleveland Avenue, 23rd. I believe it's 1:00.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, let's go to, thank you, Lino, let's go to the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fiscal Officer Number One has a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of the pending warrants in an amount of $114,121.72 attached here too.
Also move. Second. Second, and any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Two has a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of the regular payable in the amount not to exceed $220,000.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Three has a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of the following medical claims as provided by Alcare.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Four has the current investment report. I put up for new CD rates from multiple banks. First, Merit has the best rates, which are lower than the rates that we currently have. It's a .2 percent. They have a six-month and a 12-month, or, yes, six-month and a 12-month. So we'll probably keep split it back to a six and a 12, protect ourselves either way that way.
Five.
Fiscal Officer Number Five has a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the following transfers.
So moved. Second. Second, and any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Six A has a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the benefits of longevity payable on November 15th, 2013, to the members of the Plain Township Firefighters Association who meet the requirements of the attached schedule.
Also move. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Six B has a resolution, or is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the benefits of longevity payable on November 15th, 2013, to all non-marketing union employees who meet the requirements of the attached schedule.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Six B has a resolution, or is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the benefits of longevity payable on November 15th, 2013, to all non-marketing union employees who meet the requirements of the attached schedule.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
And that would conclude the fiscal officer's report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flex. Let's go to the administrative report, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Item number one is a resolution to adopt a model policy for defining indigent for purposes of burial at township expense.
Also move. Second. Discussion?
Just as a point of clarity, this pretty much mirrors what's on the OTA.
It does. It does, and I feel that the township certainly is in need of a policy to define indigent burials. We've had more and more calls for indigent burials, and it does take a lot of work on our end to first determine, is that individual indigent? And I'd say the last several calls that I've taken, once looking into indigency status based off of federal guidelines, they actually were not, and I was able to save the township money from a burial. Now having a policy in place which is based off of poverty guidelines, which are set at 150% of the 2013 and '14 federal poverty guidelines, and then all of the definitions based off of the U.S. Census Bureau, we have a pretty good policy in place. Our secretary is getting more and more use, more and more requests from people of the township, because it is a lovely cemetery, but I think we are going to see requests for more and more indigent burials. And I did speak with several funeral homes, because we do have the ability to max out what the township's contribution is for a burial with a funeral home, because we already pay for the road department, the opening, the closing, we do all of that at the graveside, which is significant, and we are required by O'Hare revised code to place a marker. So after talking to several funeral homes, what we will pay at this point per this resolution is $500 towards cremation for a burial, which is fair.
This really helps us button up overall our responsibilities from the cemetery aspect. We did the ground scanning and marking what the, in the last year, the beginning of this year.
Yes.
So there's nothing else from an operations aspect?
No, I think our cemetery is pretty well buttoned up. We know exactly what areas we have available to utilize. We know where we can, and we've had it surveyed in order to do burials, but this really then allows us, with what I think we're going to see more and more of, is when people pass away in the township or our township residents and claim that they're indigent or poor and can't afford a funeral, to really follow the guidelines for poverty to see if that is true or not. There are some counties who were really getting in trouble with how much they were paying as far as burials. It was hundreds of thousands of dollars.
So we would handle the cremation, $500 up to the cremation, burial of the ashes, and a head mark, a stone mark.
Well, it's cremated. Cremated typically has some type of urn or...
Correct. We'd still be responsible to bury that.
Yeah, we'd call it a urn.
Yeah. The marker in our graveside is separate. The $500 is up to what we will expend to a funeral home.
So there's no... And the marker is...
Separate. It could be a very simple marker, but that's all part of revised code. So it limits our budget also. And that's the resolution you have before you.
So... Just need a roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
All right, number two is an amendment to adopt changes to Article One of the employee classification section of the management package.
Also move. Second.
With this, it's essential, with this motion aspect, since the title, classification, change what the word used to be labeled as, since the company adds language isn't at least, or...
Yeah, it's putting in Mr. Steinberg's new title as a Class A employee. It's putting Mr. Edinger as a Class B employee, because essentially he reports up to our public service director, and it was just a cleanup of some titles in place in the current classes. So those were some of the changes that I received in.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Item number three is a resolution to amend Resolution Number 13-198 to increase the amount from $9,500 to $13,500 in authorized payment to M.E. Company to assist with the construction management review of the new Schneider Park restroom from 121A04C.
Also move. Second. Discussion?
That doesn't mean we're going to pay $13,500. We're just increasing that amount because we've had, as you are aware, some extra review for our inspector over there to do, Rich LaRocco. I do want to point out to the board, he has saved us over $20,000 on that project on electric alone with AED, so it's money well spent. So he's more than covered the salary on this job, so I don't think we'll spend $13,500. I'm just adding a little additional money until that job is completed.
Question, is the amount of money that we raise privately for this restroom going to cover the additional costs?
We were still, we've never had raised enough money to cover the entire restroom, but I had set aside years ago money in the general fund from estate tax for the rest of this project, so...
That's...
So the parks is cutting that check. They are making a donation also, but there's...
I thought it was going to be for the net difference in what we have raised.
It's still close. It's still, there's still a difference. I wrote a letter to them, and they are sending it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of the following medical claims as provided by Alcare.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
And that's the end of the administrative report.
Thank you, Mrs. Campbell. Let's go to the fire department report. Chief Schallberger tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Fire Department Number One is for a resolution to pay for our testing of our Scott Air Packs to war and fire. We're going to have to exceed $2,800.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fire Department Number Two is a resolution to purchase and for payment for a cascade system, refilling our medical oxygen bottles for breathing air systems for an amount not to exceed $2,650.
Now, so the fire department two...
Second. Discussion? Now, is this going to replace the unit that used to sit over at the old Harrison Station that we sold, or is this something...
No, this is actually for medical oxygen, for the amateurs. Going to the new station, we're replacing the one at station, current station one. Actually, we built it probably about 25 years ago, so it's, it doesn't meet some of the new standards, so we made a new one, we're going to purchase that.
Further discussion?
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Number three is to authorize the purchase of a thing for a Boss straight spill plow for the pickup truck to plow fire department lots. The vendor is Terry's Truck and Trailer Equipment, and not to exceed $5,000.
Also move. Second. This is so you guys can put it on your truck and take care of the lot primarily.
Yeah, that's correct. We already have the vehicle, we're just putting this plow on it to be able to maintain the new fire station and administration over there.
Yeah, it's a lot of concrete.
Yeah, there's plow, plow.
Now, I didn't want to think we discussed, as a side note conversation with the chief before, was just the logistics of that. Is there going to be a designated individual during your shift that does this, or is it...
Probably, you know, on-duty crews will maintain it, you know, through the evening hours, you know, it could be myself or someone else in the morning to get the place open.
If it's, if it's an on-duty crew, the explicit and fair understanding is, a call comes, they jump, they jump the truck and stays in park wherever it's at.
Yeah, that's how we, when we do it for our own summer, well now, if we get a call, we leave it and come back to when we get back.
There's no concern that we'd be there to make sure, so...
Yeah, that's, I mean, I'm sure you guys have some fine job, just make sure that the people that are on, all on duty, you make sure that they know what they're doing with it.
Yeah.
They can't do some damage if they don't know what they're doing.
Joe, how many fire, whoever does those, but talking to the chief, I thought our crew was still going to go ahead and do it, and then this extra plow you would be getting with Joe is like bogged down and just snowing and non-stopping, then the individuals at that fire department will try to keep it caught up instead of us constantly going back to it. We're still to make our effort as our regular group.
Our parks crew who does do the stations now will be called out regularly. Chief Snyder was worried about when we, you know, they're all over the place, and it keeps snowing, and he wants that new lot cleaned all the time, that's why he went.
Could this even be...
He could help with the park while he's there too, he said.
Could this even be used in, say, that rare occasion where the snowfall's coming down, you guys get a medic call, and you find out you can't get into a resident's where...
Right now, they usually, they used to call, we used to get a truck out in front of them. I don't know if they have the personnel... Yeah, so, you know, in the past, we've used, we contact them via radio, they're out plowing already, they'll assist us to get the resident's house, and then with the fuel pumps and stuff, sometimes, you know, to keep that open. So kind of a working together, you know, to keep it open through the day for the public to, you know, commit for fire business and that too.
Yeah, I mean, just in character of previous purposes, if that's basically, if they know all three and listen to this, you'll be the taxidermist.
So, complexity...
Last time, another good dance again this year, it's not sunny.
Somebody else on this board opened their mouth before I did, so...
I didn't say anything. I was lucky to see the weather. I didn't say anything. So the audience know there's an odd pulling thing over the years, whoever talks about snow first runs it for the entire year, so expect about six inches next week.
Bald is love this week.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fire Department Number Four is reimbursement, a resolution for reimbursement for Ben Hirschberger for $400 for a healthcare membership according to provision 37 of the collective bargaining agreement.
So moved. Second. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Who better than second, I'm sorry.
I do.
Thank you. Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And that closes the fire department.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Let's go to the road group report. Mr. Iasino?
Mr. Chairman, item number one is a resolution to authorize the purchase of parts for needed repairs to Unit 18 from Truck Sales and Services.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number two is a resolution authorizing the posting of temporary no parking signs
for the Massillon McKenna Football Game, which is played on the 2nd, I do believe, in November this year. I believe posted on the 1st, and removed on the 4th.
So moved. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number three is to authorize the posting of temporary no parking signs on the fog, on the streets listed for Stark County, Ohio, High School Championship Games on December 5th, and removed on the 9th.
So moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Item number four is a resolution to authorize the purchase of one Pony Wall Building from Tech Supply not to exceed $3,088.86.
Also on road four. Second. Discussion?
This is replacing one damaged by a contractor, insurance money we did receive. Roll call.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And item number five is to authorize the posting of temporary no parking on the north side of Diamond Street and the west side of Mill Branch. Be posted on October 25th and removed on the 28th for this weekend's, for the cross horn.
So moved. Second. Any discussions? Hearing none, roll call.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Geavases?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. We'll go to the zoning report.
Gentlemen, zoning one, you have four abatements before you this evening, and I do have a letter from the owner of zoning one A, 1218 Rushmore. I'd like to pass a copy of that and some photos to you, Mrs. Campbell and Mr. Williams, and I'll read the letter.
Do I need to make the motions so we can get it through the special...
Yes. Also move all one A. All right. Got it.
Okay.
Someone give us a second.
Second.
Okay, the letter is addressed to me, and it says, "Dear Mr. Folt, I have a fenced under construction on my property. Currently, I am waiting for the utility companies to mark their lines, indicated they would be out before Friday, 10:18. Digging will commence soon afterwards. I also have new paving materials on my property, which I will be installing around my shed. The materials are new, and therefore I do not believe I am in violation of zoning. My timeframe is to be completed with these projects before the end of the year. Sincerely, Renee Strasser." And attached, she did ask that I would show you that, I have the fence holes have been drilled, and she's beginning to put, get ready to put the posts in for the fence, and basically what she is stating with the new materials under our Resolution 03-207 under item C, this is, I'm going to refuse to read garbage listing. She's contending that she does not have discarded or used building materials, she has new building materials that are on site. And the listing says, "Discarded or salvaged non-motor vehicle materials such as scrap metals, used building materials, used lumber, used glass, plastic iron, paper, rags, storage, barrels, doors, butters, windows, tires, and appliances." But that's, her contention is that her materials are new, and that they have not been used before, and that they are on site, and that she is in the process of constructing this fence, and that she is constructing a rock garden with blockways.
Okay, I'm going to start the discussion on this. It's my understanding from talking to the residents around there that this side, even though this stuff is not listed as used building materials, they are building materials, and it, these things have been stacked around this house in this condition going on a couple years now. And I'm going to refer back then to our zoning text that speaks specifically to the board's discretion under the nuisance. Under Section B of Number Three, obstructs the reasonable and comfortable use of the surrounding properties. This is a community standard decision where the average property owner's sensitivities would be the guideline to reaching this decision. Also says, "The nuisance standard also is relevant according to the type of property owner being regulated and the surrounding owner residential or commercial industrial use," and then contend the character and extent of the potential interference with the nuisance surrounding properties. And I'm not an attorney, so I'm going to defer to our law director, because if you look at 505-87, under abatement control and removal vegetation, garden, refuge, or other debris, nowhere in the Ohio revised code does it define other debris as new or used building materials. And it speaks solely to discretion of the board to determine whether such an incident or a situation arises that could be constituting nuisance in comparison to the way the surrounding properties are being maintained, while at the same time also being sensitive to the pre-regulated property's interest to the free use of their land. Clearly, if you look at the surrounding property and the way that they're maintained and kept in conjunction to the way these building materials have been laying around the area for the extended period of time, I think goes beyond and above what is expected under, what it says under our own regulations, the standard that's relative according to the type of property being regulated and surrounding property owners' use, and the character and extent of the potential interference with the use of the surrounding properties. You can clearly look at this in the way that's been situated over the last couple of years on what these residents... and what these residents have put up with and looked at. I think this clearly would provide, under the discretion of the board according to revised codes, our ability to obey this situation. I don't think we would want to remove these materials, I think we would want to move the materials into a place that were less conspicuous and out of sight, and it would bring the property up to the existing condition of the surrounding properties and the way they're maintained. That's my opinion from the zoning text. Even though these aren't technically classified as used building materials, as our own internal policy states, but nowhere in the revised code does it differentiate between new and used.
I think part of her contention is that once she gets her fence built, this decision will be hidden from view, but, you know, that's her letter and this is her contention.
I appreciate the contention, but I also have to sympathize and we have to take into effect the surrounding property owners and their wishes also in relationship to what they've been looking at for the last two years. These materials have been stacked there, like I said, for a couple of years, she's had plenty of time to move these and get this project completed. So, in my opinion, I believe that she has seven days to get the fence constructed and the building materials out of sight and moved into a proper place or we move forward and do it for.
Just as a point of clarification, have we had any prior complaints filed with the office owner?
No, we haven't.
Well, the prior, excuse me, prior complaint.
I'm just asking from a formal, from a formal weather, it's not the four sets.
So people have come forward now saying it's been there a long time.
Forever, yeah, two years actually to this day.
Well, to start with, if you're asking me, I'm asking, okay. To start with, I agree that what you said at the beginning of, of your comments is, it's a reasonable person standing as far as the neighbors are concerned. So it's what a reasonable person under the same or similar circumstances would come to whether this is a nuisance to them and their enjoyment of their backyard, wherever, you can see the adjoining backyards in the pictures here. The concern that I would have is, you touched on briefly, what are you going to do with this stuff? Because this, the one I see here wrapped up looks like maybe pavers, they obviously have value. I don't think we're going to go on a property and take them. So what, what is the abatement process for this particular, if you do declare it a nuisance?
Is it set in a deadline by which the construction of it has to be?
To me, that would be the most reasonable abatement, because otherwise, we're now in the business of what, storing your stuff?
Because I can see, I can see this coming, yeah, crappy weather right around the corner.
Right.
All of a sudden, you've got a half dozen posts set and you still got piles of material sitting out there.
I would think that that, to me, would be the, the, kind of the way to say to her, look, we understand what your contention is and just so you're aware, the complaints that we're getting say this stuff has been there for years, so this idea that it's new or that whatever is being refuted, at the same time, being fair to the property owner, whatever timeline maybe that you come up with, thirty, sixty days, whatever it is, I don't know what her project or scale is, I, I think, to me, that seems the most reasonable way to abate the nuisance without becoming involved in either the confiscation or storage business, which I think we want to avoid.
I, I can't, I can't say I'm amicable to them to hear, I mean, that's sort of.
I understand that, sure.
Sometime, sure.
I don't think these residents want to look at this all winter, this is stacked there, November's right around the corner. I mean, we all got common sense here, but I'd like to see her start disconstruction as long as that stuff's been there all summer. All of a sudden, she decides to put up a fence now because she's finally got that left. It's already November, so all of a sudden, wow, I'll start my fence and maybe I'll just ease them on a little bit longer and have them believe that I'm going to start just constructing. Because listen, are we really going to be doing this in November, December, that project? Come on, we've all worked in our yards before, I've done construction work, this lady here is stalled, I'm sorry to say. That's what this is, this is a stall tapping. That stuff will stay there all winter and those residents will have to look at all winter. There's no way that she's going to put those pavers on by the time the snow flies, there's no way.
Well, I think maybe you give her a timeline for completion or.
Because those residents are looking at that, not by that, there's a pile of grit, a pile of stones, on plastic, it's just been there forever.
Yeah.
Well, I think even if the fence gets up immediately, that would at least create a.
I mean, if you're talking about making the neighbor happy, they're certainly going to be happy if the fence goes up. That will certainly share a lot of effuement, but if you put in a, a timeline for completion or compliance, compliance being defined as having those items stored in a garage or stored out of sight or something like that, I think you cover both bases.
Well, that's what we've done in the past.
Sure we have.
You know, when we were speaking about a previous property on Pittsburgh Road, we contacted that property owner, we had bricks up on the side of the hall. We're clear, I was, I was like, these bricks are in front of the house. They're actually, yep, they're behind, it's kind of odd.
It's a corner lot.
So these residents, every day they're, it's like, it's like, look, we all have fireplaces, most of us, and when you store your wood, you store it in the middle of your yard, no. Most people store their wood very neatly in the back and neighbors are all happy to get it stored. This here, if anything, needs to be stored neatly for now, and she still needs a timeline, but it should be stored neatly, not in the middle of your yard. Can you imagine if they have wood polishers stored, well, I'll just store my wood in the middle of the yard, that's how we're go. It goes neatly behind or by a garage or something stacked neatly, and this is not.
See, clearly by the revised codes, like what it says, we did have the ability under an agreement with the property owner with specified time, like you said.
Right.
Correct, I think it's thirty days.
I, I, as long as this carried on, I, I think, I think the building materials, the pavers, because those are not going to probably be able to be put down this late in the season. I would like to see those moved to the side of the house technically along the rear in the next two weeks.
And then the fence, the fence.
The fence would block.
And then still give her a date of construction date because she'll still have that pile around her house. At least, uh.
I, I want this stuff moved to the side. That's why I'd like to see it stored neatly to the side. And then the fence is one of, lock it out and she can finish that for her later. Um, would be my recommendation.
Would I, would I ask a question, if she completes her fence, as long as it's in, maybe she could move it to the back part of the fence?
As long as it's behind the fence and it's out of sight.
Out of view.
Out of view.
On the drive beside.
Just so you know, the stuff's on the other side, so just clarify where you want it moved.
Right. Then it would need to be moved to the side because where it's going to be enclosed behind the fence and give her thirty days to complete the fence.
Thirty days?
Would they move this stuff off the side and stack it even to the rear? And then that way the fence.
The sad thing is, the side of her house right now, she has bricks stored there.
We want it all put over there.
She's moving her fence, doesn't she, coming along the back and going up along what would be the south side of the property, along the Rushmore circle side with the fence?
But the residents in this area have dealt with this.
I mean, come on, no one, none of us want to see this, and these poor people have been dealing with it. And, and this, this just needs to be taken care of. People don't deserve to have something like this and stare at it every day. I think they've been awfully patient, these residents, but enough's enough, please. We have to help these people.
Can we agree that two weeks to have it moved and then thirty days to completion of the fence? Have it closed?
Either that or just thirty days of complete fence, which would then.
How about the building materials?
Which would then still have materials behind, who could be able to move material behind the fence?
Well, the building materials.
Instead of trying to move them twice.
The building materials can move to a location that's going to be enclosed when the fence is completed.
Okay, so if I, they've kind of talked to them, find out, give them a quarter or something, so they're going to be in a location rather than behind where the fence is, in two weeks to have it, thirty days to complete the fence?
Yes. I think that would, I would, that would accommodate the people in the neighborhood. And the board would agree.
Let me ask, we brought the construction work, she said she's going to be using the fence.
It's going to be behind the fence.
Well, that would be behind the fence.
What time would we give her to get that construction?
I think if she gets the stuff out, it's about the residents. If she gets it out of their hair, I think they're probably satisfied.
Finish it by our leader.
Yeah, if you alleviate their concerns, I mean, she can proceed at her pace, but I think you need to alleviate their concerns. I just wanted to make sure the beginning clearly, I mean, I understand what it says on our zoning, um, resolution, but clearly the revised code doesn't, for some reason, it doesn't discern between used and new building materials.
Some people have a job.
She also, she also, let's not forget that she has a pile of grit or sand and snow.
All of that.
Yeah, all, all, all material.
All the materials.
Okay.
Okay, so, we will, uh, hold this.
We do a roll call on that.
Yeah, just to authorize.
Oh, we can come back and, yeah, we do that.
Actually, let's do a roll call on twenty, twelve eighteen Rushmore Avenue. Uh, it was motioned and seconded that a two-week period will be given for the building materials, all building materials to be moved to a location of the property that is inconspicuous and then will be inside the new fenced-in area that she's constructing, and she has thirty days to finish the fence. And you want to authorize the zoning director to communicate that to her in writing? Yes. We have a letter, that too, we have a letter.
Yeah, we have a few that you got to contact.
Okay, roll call.
So is that, who's moving for that one?
I moved on. Second. Second, Mr. Hawes, no further discussion, roll calls.
Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Thank you, then.
Okay, Danny, I think on this next one, we should probably look at this one individually also because of the circumstances.
I'll move on, zoning one B, four thousand and one Martindale Road, northeast.
I will second that, discussion.
This is the, uh, property at the corner of Martindale and Plain Center. This is owned by Trevor Rice and others. And what happens is in this site, there is actually slightly more than six acres, which in some instances, if it was one site, would be considered an agricultural parcel which would be kind of out of our bounds. However, what we've done, because this site has three parcels, we're kind of taking this individual parcel out. This is a four-acre site, it's the site of the hall. And I believe in conjunction and discussion with Mr. Williams, that this is an appropriate method and way to go about this property here, for an after individual parcels.
For further discussion, I don't think there's an individual in the township that hasn't driven down Martindale Road and Plain Center and looked at this property. My question is, when was this property subdivided?
I don't have any idea.
Because going back through the minutes, which I have a tendency to do a lot, we were always led to believe that this was a five-acre parcel. And I don't understand why, after all this time and putting both residents off in that area, by the poor conditions of this property, and we've been told repeatedly that there's nothing that we can do to rectify that situation for the people living around there. Every one of us sitting at this front table have been out to that property, talked to this property owner individually, practically begged for him to do something to, uh, take care of the issues over there and we've always been met with resistance and being totally ignored and, um, uh, promised and that were made, never kept.
I think part of the issue is that this.
Why are we finding out?
The property has, has a, had an agricultural history to it.
But we've never looked in, we've never looked into seeing that it was over five acres until now?
Took a look into it to determine whether or not that agricultural history, which predated zoning, would have bearing and Mr. Williams' office determined that the agricultural history, we can go after, without that because of the parcel.
Once we realized that the parcels existed in smaller increments than five acres, I was always under the understanding it was a six-plus acre parcel. Once we determined that it was cut up, you can treat individual parcels individually. And in this particular instance, I'm not sure how we found out that it was less than that, but this gave us a new, uh, chance at doing something about that property.
And the next question is, how soon can we start?
Well, we have a statutory guideline.
Seven days.
Right.
And the next, the other part is the part of the so-called construction project on this house. How much, how long do they have to complete the exterior construction project? The front porch steps, everything has been torn off and under construction for several years now.
I do notice, I did notice that every window's there. As far as, uh, uh, not at this time yet.
That would have, would that have to be under the property maintenance kind of, because it's the exterior.
For us to do anything about it, it would have to be, but whether it is or not is another issue.
Let's. Well, there was, construction started on this house several years ago and part of it involved tearing the front porch off, the front steps and several other things, the exterior. And this has been going on now, going back to Steve Pearl, which would take us back four or five years, that this house has been under construction also. Would be my recommendation that the board also looks into the property maintenance code issues or anything else with the fire department to make sure the construction is sound and everything they need to do to make sure that the property owner knows that we want this move forward and completed along with the abating of the, uh, high grass weeds and other things that are taking place on that property because this has gone on for well too long and now that we know that there's something we can do, we may as well move forward on the conditions of the home, the property, along with the conditions of the high grass and weeds.
I can give Captain Slavoff, who's the chief of the rest of your.
And then also look into the conditions under the property.
Right, this is building and decide what, where we can add.
Danny, on some other assessments or reviews of that property, there was formal complaints noted during our public speaks of, uh, business running on it. Do we have any more documentation?
To the depth of my knowledge, the property maintenance business that was here left that site this past spring. They're operating out of a warehouse in downtown D. N.
I just asked because I don't want to kind of cross Plain Cent, Plain Center, north towards fifty-fifth, towards fifty-fifth. As far as you get past the house, but I think before the opening, I mean, there's a couple of buckets of fence, fence posts and any material that just sits in there, so that's why I ask about the business aspect, given larger dump trucks. Because quite frankly, I think, given the, how big ones they've got, those can be stored as well in a inconspicuous manner because if we get the weeds knocked down, I mean, that's only temporary gratification for the poor residents of everybody if we can have everything else stored and secured, that'd be more sightlike plus.
We'll sit down with Mr. Williams' office and determine, uh, best method of approach. As we, you know, we started on this, we got, we got the first step started on this property, I believe.
Well, it would be who the property owner go date this in the next seven days himself because it's going to be an extremely expensive building.
And we're, um, losing our seasonal employees, so we'll all have to put on our boots and help Derek with this one.
Is there, is there anything that we can extend, to where we could extend a seasonal or two?
If they're available, we're just down to one and that's, that's up to Derek.
Do it for the safety.
It's Dan Deeds and he's phenomenal, so if he's available, I'd certainly keep him as long as.
I think we need to consider, consider that because I mean, with his weakness we're running into the parks, I mean, typical nuisances are then busy, but given the condition of the property.
Boy, so, you're great, Derek, you can check if he's still available, I know he's.
Yeah, he's available, he's all his schooling is nowadays, he's been so, and he loves working here as well.
Yeah, he's been a workhorse.
So if all we can do that, will we need?
No, no.
We won't need any formal resolution, it'd be just a continuation.
The sad part about this owner of this property, they're landscapers.
Property maintenance company, yeah, you'd think they'd, I've had discussions with them in the past, like, you know, it's hard to be an advertiser for your business, but.
About to add four or five thousand dollars to this road. Mr. Lina?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And then, uh, item C and D are both at the same property, eighteen sixty Woodlawn Northwest. One is for the grass and weeds, uh, front area and the rear of the property and the other one is for a junk motor vehicle on the property on the front, which was moved from the property to the north. to the north to this place.
Well, I'm gonna move on, zoning one C and D.
I'll second that discussion.
I just know, guys, it was last, last weekend, I was in a rough, Lake Knights Road, and there was a resident that said something to me, and honestly, from the back, this place looks like a jungle. It looks like, quite frankly, the place will fall, fall, and it does not look good. But when you go around onto Whipple to try to get a shot of the lot, you can't, you cannot see the house. It's like a line of trees, and the only thing I think Danny is you can attest to is, there was a car, they enclosed, I'm gonna call it landscaping, trailer out in front of it, so, you know, going down Whipple, you could never see this, but it was for the sake that, you know, these poor residents that live around there, the one lady said, can you please do something? I mean, this is the point where literally, it's a grapevine, different weeds, you know, there was rodents around there, and obviously, if you're the zoning homeowner, I don't want to be seeing that, so.
And our crews have cut this in the past, and the resident, or the owners cut it in the past.
Is there somebody living there?
No, I don't believe it is. I, you know, it's hard to tell, I'm not going to, there are, there's no shovel, there's a salt bag, or stuff by the door, and it just looks relatively new.
Just by way of history, Danny, am I correct that this is the car we abated from the property it was moved from?
Yes.
And they just wheeled it over to the property's store?
That's why I was like, because it's got, because it's.
We went to court on this one, because it didn't get moved, and we won, and their solution to that apparently was to wheel it on down the road.
I mean, in all, in all seriousness, outside, outside the baiting.
Is that about that sticker on the back, when it was 128?
You may, may.
In all, in all seriousness, outside of the abatement, is this something that we can take a look at even for?
Store and empty.
Here we go, house for demo, even from a high level to determine if.
The taxes are paid. And turning up to now, that's been an issue in terms of vacant.
All right, I'm just asking.
Part of it is taxes have not been paid on, just the taxes are up to date. You know, we can continue to monitor the condition of the house. But, and, I've got something else.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasus?
Yes.
Okay, zoning number two, you have four nuisance payments before you're screening?
And also move adoption of nuisance payments to A through to D. Discussion, roll call.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And Mr. Gevasus?
Yes. I have a question, maybe, I don't know, Chuck, if you know, because I think it was brought to Chief Schneider's attention, and Danny, I talked to you, and I sent you some pictures of the house on market, next to the old Edgewood Swim Club with the porch fallen, and the doors and windows and everything of those buildings being wide open.
I can report to you that I've been in touch with CDF Holdings, the, it's their real estate division, and I have afforded to them the name of a couple of different contractors. They, they told me that they want it taken care of as soon as possible, when I afforded them, just within the last week, you know, two contractors, so I believe we're moving.
Contractors to raise the house, or to?
Repair the porch. Share the porch, or take the porch off. Are you certain that, are you certain that windows, windows and doors are secured?
To our knowledge, has those windows and doors been secured, to our knowledge, yet?
Not at this time, I believe.
Is the fire department going out there to look to secure the building? Because people have been going in and out of it, I was.
I know the Captain Slavoff went up there, and they did look at it, and I don't think we went up with you that day or not, but they worked out of the barn behind it, for makes, they worked out of the barn behind it, on David's, with the motors and everything. I don't know if they use that for any kind of office or anything else.
Eric, is there anything that we can do to order the building, and center people to order the doors and windows and close them?
Because the doors are standing wide open, just front windows. Okay, so what do we?
Last time I heard, the doors were closed.
They don't lock.
Address, is it three-year, five-on-five days?
No, it'd have to be, you know, roof collapse or.
Right, and it's not structural.
I mean, as long as the, the interior door is shut.
Nobody's, nobody's living in them, and people are going in and out of them. And in the past, like the house in Moore Ridge, we secured by putting plywood over the doors and windows to make sure that people aren't going in. What do we need to do that in this case?
Let me look at it, what you need to do. Let me talk to you maybe individually about. That's some legal advice I don't want to dispense, maybe, right now.
I'm just, I'm concerned with something.
I understand.
Starting a fire.
Yeah, we tried to shut the store doors, you know, they, they would, it shut, but they wouldn't manage. The interior door on the one side was locked.
The one building, it was a smaller building, it had a walk-through, like a breezeway, both sides were open.
Yes.
Where you could walk in. Danny, let me, I wanted to make sure I heard this again, what, was it the church of the con, who told you they're gonna start working on this house?
The, the holding company, which is the mortgage company.
So this is just different than the one, because if you remember, I came a long time ago.
When it was under the.
Church A was a different church, or someone's been waiting to do something, and then it went, well, let's hold off, because now it might have been purchased, so, this is another one that's been going on for a long time, because I had a resident complain to me months and months ago about this home, and I came to Danny on that house.
It was been up in the air with, with the potential sale, or what was potentially happening with it, you know, probably the zoning gone through, it would be probably gone by now, it's that, but now that's all. I've been, I've finally gotten in touch with them. The holding company has different layers to sift through to find out.
That roof is gonna fall off, and when it falls off, it's gonna land, it's gonna land at the north end of Market Avenue.
That was a front.
From that perspective, that's a fire department issue. So let's have them get out there and take out that.
That roof's gonna land in Market Avenue.
And that's, yeah, that's something they can make the call on.
Are you gonna cut out date on this one, because you guys, no, I've been, I've talked to him, I'm almost a year ago on this house, and now we're still, so is there gonna be a?
With the roof, we gotta work for the fire department. Security building, like I already said, you deal with this individually, what security for it?
Because we had one time talked about putting that big up property maintenance code, because it's a.
It's empty.
Matter of fact, the resident who talked to me said, you guys have this property maintenance code, what examples are we, when we leave something like that on Market, half tipped over, if you ever look at that porch? So, it all makes sense, but we really need to keep an eye on that, if we're gonna be, show, we want any respect from our residents, to show who we are, and we have a property maintenance code, and we allow an eyesore, and in front of Market, that everybody drives by, we do nothing about, then, then we must not be people of our word, so we have to be careful on this, because that's been going on for a while.
Just make sure, Chuck, when you guys inspect that porch, you check the structural integrity of the whole building while you're at it.
Yeah, if we can, try to take something there to get up on it, and, I don't know if we'll be able to get in or not, I don't know sure if I can get in or not, but.
All right, let's go to zoning three.
Yes, zoning three is a resolution for the purchase of mapping through the Regional Planning Commission, and we've been submitting emails back and forth on, on this, with various possibilities. So I think what I would like to do tonight is possibly table this item, and we do have some other items to look into as to who can possibly provide this mapping at a reasonable price and a reasonable quality. The initial, the initial concept, basically, is to replace mapping that we have that is minimally ten years old and over with, basically, something that would be of a durable material, kind of a paper, it's, it would be color that shows both the zoning districts, parcel numbers, subdivision names, kind of that old shooting map on something like this. What we find is that individuals, many residents are, like to see a map. It's hard to get someone in the office when they're coming in to see something around one, around my computer screen or something, I don't know, you try to see your big picture, you don't see very much at all. I know many of you come in to look at some of our maps, and to be quite honest, it's kind of embarrassing to show the people what they have as far as mapping. The initial presentation was by Regional Planning Commission to prepare these, at a cost, and now, we've also found that possibly the auditor's office will be able to prepare the same mapping, but the question is, again, they have concerns as to whether or not they can provide the quality of mapping that we want as far as getting a printout. And I do have a meeting scheduled with the auditor's office on the fourteenth of November of this year to determine whether they can provide what, what we want at reasonable cost. We do have one hundred and eight quarter sections in the townships, and we would get a map such as this for each quarter section. The price from the Regional Planning Commission is a little over thirteen thousand dollars, and that would come out to two hundred and twenty, two hundred and twenty-five dollars per quarter section. We can always look at producing the mapping, to print one of these on vinyl is about thirty-five, thirty-six dollars apiece. We could look at going to paper printing and maybe reduce that cost. And again, we sent a few emails back and forth during the course of the day regarding this process, but I did want to bring it forward and say that's something that I think isn't needed, just to help our situation in our office with our residents, you know, to see something in the map, we could maybe provide it for them in a responsible fashion.
Well, my conversation with the auditor's office this afternoon, I had a conversation with Mr. Harold Harrell, and Scott May had called and talked to him also. They're currently doing something similar in North Canton through the auditor's office, but what he's basically saying as far as the quarter section maps, they already have all that information as far as our zoning and everything, and he said he's able to print the paper versions of those maps, and pretty much word for word at the quality that we would need. If we wanted to have vinyl maps done, we can get that information because it's digitized, and we could have those printed at the thirty-five dollars times, how many quarter section maps?
Hundred and eight.
Hundred and eight, so.
It'd be a little under four thousand dollars.
It would be a little bit under four thousand dollars if we needed those, but at the time, what most entities are doing now, they're using the digitized versions, if somebody comes into the office and they're printing out a map on a eight-and-a-half by eleven or seventeen in color, because it's already downloaded and digitized, as you can imagine, and the person's standing there with this, and that could be done at no additional cost to our, to the taxpayers. It's just that going forward, because of the vinyl maps, I, Danny agreed that those old quarter maps that we got into, they're ancient. But if we have the ability to do this, and the auditor's office has that information for us, at no additional charge to our taxpayers, because from what I'm, I'm understanding here from our conversations through email today, the breakdown for the, the quarter sections, the preparation of the base mapping, they want to charge us twenty-two, or ninety-two hundred dollars for something that we can get at no charge.
Well, that's something we just recently found out from the auditor's office itself this year, and that's why we've got a meeting scheduled with, and a couple of their technicians or GIS folks are working at putting one of these fully together for us as an example, so we can see exactly how it comes up in a map format to make certain that, that things aren't too fuzzy or whatever, it's, it's a matter of testing capabilities of, of two different agencies here, basically, and that's why we just have to put this on the table for right now, until we find out, once again, what the best route for us to go after would be.
And I think.
I guess we could always put it up, you know, if, if we have it digitally, in digital format, I suppose we could always set up some kind of a computer station in the office. Sixty-inch would work fine for me. If I could do that before the World Series starts, we could, oh, I'm sorry, but, you know, we could, no, you know, we could.
What size are those quarter maps in there now, the paper ones?
All there, probably thirty-six square, forty-eight square.
Well, we could have colored ones printed by the auditor's office for two, three dollars apiece paper. Those paper ones have lasted us, the twenty years I've been here. The only thing we could do now is make it with full color like the vinyl.
The key, the key is just gonna be as to whether or not, you know, and, and this is what we, we were told this by their GIS gentleman, we're directly with us, is make certain that they can provide the clarity once it gets printed out.
I think from a quality of information content, the auditor's office is much further, much further ahead, because they're not gonna, they're not gonna have the lead time on the data scrubbing, because I had a conversation with Alan here this afternoon as, as well. I mean, when a resident comes into our office, I mean, are we simply displaying that quarter, quarter map to them, and then obviously, when they, when they leave, they take down what notes, or they asking us for copies of those today? Because where I'm going at, is if they're just simply taking a view on this, I'd rather put a forty, fifty-inch monitor up on that wall, so when they're talking with you, you can, can point it, no, no different than if it was a PowerPoint presentation.
And I guess the key there will be, you know, if we could do something like that, that would be great, and then if we, once again, talking this over with the folks from the auditor's office, be able to box out the area that we want printed, you know, zoom in, zoom out type of things, and so that way.
According to that's what he's saying, yeah.
Could be with, with something printed, it's gonna take an entire quarter section.
And that's, in my discussion with Alan, he had indicated to us today, hey, if it's a one-off copy here or there, okay, I can get it printed, and I can quite frankly get it turned around in a day, two, two days at absolute most, and that, I think, as he told me, and it's not like he told you, hey, there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a cost enough, we go in and say, hey, we want fifteen or a hundred copies of this, then there's gonna be associated expenses with it, but, I mean, for the sake of.
But if we're making somebody a copy, we would charge that resident for that copy likely if they come.
We can agree on a copy.
But I mean, I think we all could agree, standing at this, or sitting at this table, that pursuing this route with the auditor's office, because he told me that he can update that mapping in real time.
Right, that's for your.
If zoning could change, or there are annexations, or whatever, it might be able to occur, in real time and at very little expense to the taxpayer, because he said that's basically what his office has been working to do, is to centralize all this county information in one database that is going to give everybody access to. And they're getting ready to file an accident agreement with the city of North Canton to do the same thing, so fourteen thousand dollars, a forty-inch monitor, we can get it Walmart for two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. I mean, that's a big difference. So I, I don't want to table this, I want to move forward with the other direction, because personally speaking, I'm not in favor of spending fourteen thousand dollars for mapping that can be pretty much provided to us for a week, at very little cost. I mean, that's just my personal opinion.
Well, we're obviously, you know, as I said, we've got the meeting set up with the auditor, and we can proceed that issue, and that's what we're saying.
We don't take any action on this right now, we'll see, we'll see what the quality of the content is that comes from the auditor.
We'll modify the resolution to.
We're not at a point where we have to.
No, no.
Any action, so.
I mean, but the quality, with the quality, I think that we're gonna be able to give, be given, Scott and Alan, is going to be a lot greater than the quality that exists over there currently in the zoning office. All right, let's go on.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Let's go on to Parks and Facilities.
Thanks. Mr. President, Parks and Facilities number one is an amendment to a resolution, to a resolution for cutter power sales, being hereby resolved by the Plain Town Board of Trustees, South County, Ohio, to amend resolution number one three five four one. The only part that was changed in that was the bottom, the, the trade-in of the two motors was not right there, so this just states that we traded in two motors.
Also move.
And that don't need to be removed from the inventory list.
My second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasus?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Parks and Facilities number two was just an announcement that the small dog park side of the dog park has been opened. They ran a snow fence.
Five hundred feet, maybe, four.
Yeah, yeah, it's closer to four hundred feet to separate the small dog from the large dogs. It's gated, it's been checked every morning. I haven't seen any, any issues at all so far, it's working great.
It does look good, I stopped by Saturday, but Friday, I think it looks good now.
The grass is growing in the other one pretty good, I checked it today. It's really starting to grow.
Looks good. I think Chief Schneider might have named one of you guys to chuck that grass one. Hey, because that grass over there, fire station's coming in like a golf-
I don't know what they used over there there, something happened over there, that fire sticks, that two planted.
Oh, they used just as much there as we did on six acres, that's why.
I think we might have fifteen inches of topsoil there, you know.
They actually used to say grassy, though, too. And but both of its coming to four acre area. And by the way, you know, Chuck and Chief Schneider have been doing a lot of the landscaping this first plan, the bushes and all the plants on the fire station, the shrubs, and I walk around here looking at that stuff. Really looks good, you guys have done a good job.
Yes, weather's not cooperating yet, so hopefully we'll get the rest of it done here.
Yeah, but you guys have done a fantastic job doing it, so. Okay, let's go to-
Parks number three was just a letter on here from the Department of Health, saying that they were out on Saturday during the softball cup to inspect the concession areas, and everything passed with blank colors. I talked to Joyce, she was recertified in her safe serve of last month, and she told me this morning, you know, just to note that since the concession has opened by us, we have never had any health code violation since we've built this. And they are really thorough, we didn't come in, I've seen them do it a tire too.
Well, the one thing since Joyce has been over there with concessions, she's always been very thorough with maintenance, the upkeep and the cleaning, yes, and making sure everything is-
I wish they'd do a fantastic job.
-on par, so. She's not an easy talk, Joyce.
Yeah, I will, especially when they come in the middle of one of our biggest events.
In a torrential downpour.
Yeah, and we've got volunteers to receive no violations. She's just running the heck out of that concessions, doing a great job.
And she's always a fantastic travel concession partner.
I just, I know that Rob's got the softball cup recap, but the good things are always worth repeating, but once again, it just was very professionally done, again, from all aspects. I know we had a lot of hands involved in that, Joe's guys were over there, Lisa, I mean, it just, again, very professionally done.
It was good merch programming, we're picking up with Bud.
Went well, we had a hundred and twenty-four teams in in two days, we had torrential downpours, probably a twenty-degree drop in temperature, and believe it or not, the fields bounced back the next day when it was sunny. We were surprised, but Derek's crew has did a good job at getting it ready. The softball folks remarked it never looking better with the striping, the stenciling, the preparation. Joe's guys, quite frankly, saved the tournament for us by performing parking duties above and beyond what would be expected of anybody, and providing so much efficient parking that we only parked a grand total of thirty cars in the allotment the entire week, and that was Saturday in the middle of a torrential downpour with games coming and going at the same time, we just didn't have the space, but they initially migrated over. I think we only towed one car a weekend, which was a call from residents to tow a car parked illegally in the allotment, so that didn't even come from the tournament. And you guys already mentioned what Joyce and her concessions people did, and thank you to Lisa, Joe, and Derek and the preparation they had made my job very, very manageable when I came in to do that. So a lot of that was done well in advance before I was here and ready to go, I had stepped in, take the ball and all of it.
I just, well, I'll start first, Joe and I are famous for interrupting each other, but I just want to say, Joe's crew did a fabulous job parking, it was absolutely professional, but we would not have been able to have that efficient parking if it wasn't for Derek creating two hundred and fifty more parking spots in the grass area and containing that parking for the tournament and our residents of Diamond Estates to one site. So Derek, a tremendous hats off for that forward thinking and doing that, and also creating the new parking for the referee's only and the events tournament. That was your idea that was just fantastic, which allowed everybody else to operate so efficiently. The fields, I've never, ever seen look better, and what I told everybody after the tournament is, is our diamond park is self-funded, and with events like this, it does fund our parks, and it's a trickle-down with, when we have a successful event like this, that's what maintains those people's jobs in the parks. And to see those stencils, which Sean even handed, free-handed on those fields, those soccer balls, it was just amazing. But the teamwork from, from Joe and Derek's crew and Marty, who used to work in the parks there for the last week, but Derek, your forward thinking with the parking, I know I talked with Detective Koenig, he was expecting his neighborhood to be inundated with crazy soccer parents, of which I'm one, so I'm not, you know, talking, you know, trash-talking soccer parents, because I am one. It up, I just can't say what a great job you did enough.
As such, they've asked us to bid on another tournament outside the one that we already have, but this is what you guys did, all the-
At least it's still some, I thunder. I do, I do believe, I mean, don't get me wrong, my guys did a great job, everybody worked hard, including Derek's guys, we were all together working together, but if we didn't have those two hundred and fifty extra parking spaces-
It's not a question.
-we would have been a problem. What helped a little bit too was when they had the game schedule, people were leaving because they weren't staying there as long, so it was a little bit a combination of everything, but everybody worked together so great, it was nice to be a part of, and hopefully we could continue to keep doing it. If it didn't rain, we'd have been a perfect weekend.
Yeah. I'm going to charge, you know, Rob with the cold I have now.
You're welcome.
Well, I appreciate the kind words and, you know, pass it on to all my members in my crew, and we do it because we're all compassionate about what we do, and we make everything work as smoothly as we can.
Yeah, and I have to say, Rob did something new this year, and the day after the tournament, we all got together, everybody who worked that tournament, and just had kind of an unfiltered what we think we could do better, so.
We've got most of the things.
We've got, we've got some, I think we always will, so that was nice, Rob, thanks for that.
This is the number two, Robert.
We have a few upcoming events just to make note of. We have the graveyard seven-on-seven youth lacrosse tournament, sixty teams will be coming in this weekend from five different states. We again have the All-Star Parks and Road and Concessions Crew on duty, so I feel fairly confident. We have switched up some of our services that'll make our jobs even a little more efficient this weekend, but we expect success there as well. Those folks continue to bring in big tournaments for us and new clinics this winter and are expanding their programming and their business, so it's nice to have them here. We have the Parks for Soldiers on behalf of the Friends of Plain Parks Board on Sunday, November tenth, in which Commissioner Creighton, U.S. Air Force Lieutenant Colonel Daniel Finkelstein, Blue Star Mothers, Canton Akron Chapter President Brenda Russell, our three esteemed trustees, Jim Wolfker, the Marine Corps League McKinley Attachment, and Nate Kalsic from the Harbor Volunteers will be in attendance, as well as a sponsor from Altcare. So we're excited to have it, it'll be another obstacle course Derek's got down, we know what we're going to do for it and execute it, and I have no doubt it'll go well. Keep in mind, December seventh is our winter fest, our fifth year anniversary of that event, which includes the tree lighting and some new things. Again, thanks to Derek and his crew for the forward thinking and bringing ideas to the table, and Joyce as well. Their passion helps us create new events and new revenue streams, which is what our goal is, so that's all I got.
How's it going to be our board spokesman at the Parks for Soldiers, is that right?
Al is going to speak on behalf of the board, I believe.
Sorry?
I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Just making sure you were listening.
Yes.
Just making sure you were listening, sorry, Chief Shot. You can rate me on later.
I think next year's president is a virgin.
Trusty Haas?
Because Al's not going to do it, so it's all right.
That leaves it up to trusty Haas.
Fair enough.
Well, you could actually-
Lord has not ever sworn on- If Mr. Haas is speaking, I'll be putting a tie on him.
Trusty Gevasis is a veteran, so he probably should be-
This Lord has not ever sworn on words.
I like Scott's ones.
Oh, you'll love the tie on him. Outside of that, our indoor programming starts on November one. We are moving very well with that, we're starting some new programming initiatives this winter, in particular with session two. I mentioned when I was hired, my goal would be to have two new programming events and one new large tournament my first year, and I, we're well on our way to the new programming and hopefully in the next couple of weeks we'll have another announcement.
Perfect, good job. Okay, no communications?
Water.
You need to speak enough earlier. Now we come to the portion for public speaks, we do have one individual already on the agenda, which is, that is Bradley here.
Yes, Brad.
Brad? They put you on here as Bradley, I'm sorry.
I know, I know.
But-
We're being very formal.
And we come on up and-
Okay.
And I apologize, I'm only reading what they have on here.
I know, that's what it is.
Just need your address. Need your address for the record.
Seven one nine one Sherwood Wood Road, northeast, Canton, four four seven two one. Okay, and I know you're all extremely busy and extremely involved in everything. My issue is minimal compared to what you guys are dealing with on a day-to-day basis, but I wanted to direct my questions towards the lot mowing in our land, Wellington Woods, there's Wellington Hills, it's the old Lemon Farm in Ondola Dr. And I've been communicating with any folk, and I understand the regulation is above if the weeds get higher than eight inches or something like that over the entire lot or fifty percent of the lot, then the lot needs to be mowed or something like that. But there's nothing that says how we, or what we expect after it's, you know, the letter has been sent to the people. There's nothing that says mow the entire lot or mow a portion of the lot, anything else like that, so I wanted to-
For clarification purposes, are you talking about a lot that hasn't been built on yet?
A lot that has not been built on yet.
And are you indicating, or is what you're witnessing over there, are they mowing only part of it and not the whole thing?
They were mowing only part of it. The new owner is mowing the entire lot. But before, again, Danny, and you can quote me on this, but you said that as long as the regulation with fifty percent of the property and eight inches above, you could do anything you wanted to do. And what was happening was the previous owner was mowing the sides and not the center, or mowing the center and not the sides. That's basically what it all boils down to. So there was nothing that said, you know, they said, when you go out there and do whatever you do, mow the lawn, you know, mow the lot, whatever it is, but there's nothing that says what our expectations are in terms of the entire lot being mowed. There's only the state regulation that said fifty percent, you know, higher than eight inches, over fifty percent of the property.
I think, Danny, to that, if we go out, look at the lot, and half of it's already been mowed, and it's less than fifty percent that's not mowed, I don't think it's that story, there's nothing we can do.
But I think, one of the issues with, with the property that I believe that he's referring to is that this lot, number one, or number two in the- Quite a few lot, there were rocks in the middle of the property, and generally, what I recognize when I would go out, I believe that the sides, the front, sides and rear were mowed, there was some areas near the middle of the lot that were some large boulders and some things in there that were not totally mowed around. But what I- The groundhog.
The groundhog.
The groundhog sits underneath the rock. Okay. But again, and yet again, statistically, you know, it was my opinion that over fifty percent of the lot, of the lot mowed well over, in my opinion.
Now, are we sending, are we sending them a letter to mow the lot, and they're only mowing half of it?
Yeah, basically.
Or what we deriving is that the part that's not mowed is where you're saying there's rocks.
Rough brown rocks over there. Well-
There's any undeveloped law.
Yeah.
Let me, let me look at the language with Danny, because we may need to clear that up. It seems silly that somebody-
I think we can do the definition of what you expect after the fact.
Right, it seems silly that somebody could mow sixty percent of the lot and say, well, we've complied. Because when we invade, we're talking about invading the nuisance.
The property, right, the property.
So let me, let me look at it with Danny.
I agree with you, Roy, because I think the, I think the reason, I don't know, I'm trying to maybe guess back as to when this was done.
You know, what I was asking you for is if, when we got the call about nuisance may exist, and we went out there and fifty percent of it was already mowed, what I'm hearing is that we're getting complaints that the whole lot needs mowed, and what they're doing, they're only mowing half of the lot.
Right.
That's a big difference. It's not happening anymore, right? Did I hear you say that?
It's not happening with the present owners, no.
Right.
But it could happen with the other lots.
Oh, sure. But we're making sure you're not having the problem. If they're not doing it right now and where you are.
Not right now.
Okay.
Because the property is-
Put that on your list.
I think part of the, I'm trying to deestimate back again, I think maybe some of this came to do with, we will receive calls about weeds and flower beds.
Yeah, we've dealt with that issue, but that's a little different.
Right, you know, and I think maybe that's what they're trying to say.
The grass is mowed, but there's flower beds that have weeds, well, that clearly isn't fifty percent of the abatable property area, so we've said on that, well, there's only so much we can do, but let's, let's sit down and look at the language so we can address the entire property.
Yeah, it's just what you'd expect.
Sure, I understand what you're saying, and it makes sense.
Yeah, I've generated quite a list for Mr. Lemon that I've worked on over a pair of months or so. We'll be meeting a lot. Well, there are some people that, you know, you notify them, and they come right out, and they do all of it, but there are some people that you have to run down, some people do it every six weeks or eight weeks, and four weeks, and, you know, so it's all discombobulated.
Right.
But Lemon, except his property, no problem, you call him up and he responds right away. Got church each, they own that one lot, and you've got to chase them down all the time, so. And this lot, in fact, to me, was being mowed with a push mower at one time, or a riding mower, tractor, you know, that types of things, so.
Sure.
But since the new owner of the property, I worked with his son before, he's been very communicative, and we've sent his guy out, and he knows it, and, you know, so.
You're bringing a very good point.
Yeah, but I mean, it seems like they expect that, the regulation is there, but the expectation isn't, so, and you expect that a hundred percent of the property needs to be done, but-
Sure, but once we send a letter asking for the property to be, you know, mowed, we mean the lot, not fifty percent. Fifty percent of the stuff we're gonna get, there's an entire-
That's the expectation.
And so we can clarify that.
Format, or, you know, a formal ruling of, you know, that type of thing. And the second item was with Mr. Ignacio, or, and I see him.
I see him.
I see him.
That's right.
But Joe, you were going to have Dunstetter take a look at it or something like that, EPA? I had called about a noisy vehicle, a son's, stepson's truck.
Well, you called, you didn't call me about the noise, you called me about the oil on the road.
Yes, I did, because-
And then Chief Schneider happened to go on vacation.
Yes.
So I do believe he comes back Thursday?
Yeah, he'll be back Thursday.
I'll argue with him Thursday.
So nothing is done.
I haven't had a chance to talk to him, it's what happened.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right.
His neighbor's kid's car, stepkid's car, that oil all over the road.
Yeah, he worked his car and everything else, and that's not indicative of the environment you want in neighborhood, you know, that type of thing. So, plus, his truck sounds like a diesel truck, making lube, as opposed to, you know.
That's why it starts up in the morning 11:00, right?
No.
That's a separate issue.
It takes a couple of hours to work on that.
And sound.
Turn across from body.
That's part parcel of the same thing. That did happen to this location, but since then, the gentleman's purchased a new truck that doesn't do that. But the stepson still has his vehicle.
Okay.
So, that's all.
Well, thank you.
No, you're welcome, all right. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any? Yes, I don't.
Thank you. My name's Jim Zweck, 5928 Maple Dell Street Northwest, Canton, Ohio. That's actually Jackson Township, so I'm not spying on you. Actually, I'm the extension chairman for the District Lions Club, and the district that we're in represents, is made up of five counties. Stark, Portage, Mahoney, Trumbull, and Columbia. There are 10 districts of Lions in Ohio. What we do from time to time is look at areas that have had a Lions Club, but the club has closed down. And some of you may remember that Woolbrook Lions Club existed here for many years, but recently it closed due to lack of membership and age of the members. I think it's been four or five years. So what we like to do is come back into the area and review, and see if we can get renewed interest, and start a new Lions Club. First, let me tell you a little bit about what we do, what type of services the Lions can offer. What we do is we assist the needy people with their eye exams and eyeglasses. We collect used eyeglasses and give them to doctors to go on mission trips. We assist with purchasing of a seeing eye dog or a pilot dog for a blind person. We do scholarships for seniors. We sponsor a Boy and a Girl, to Buckeye Boys, Buckeye Girls. We offer a quest program. We can do Thanksgiving and Christmas baskets for needy families. And there's many other services that we can provide that a club may deem necessary. A little history of the Lions for you. It was formed by a businessman by the name of Melvin Jones in 1917 in Chicago, and he and a group of his fellow men felt they could do more humanitarian work than is presently being done. We are the world's largest service organization. We have over 1.3 million men and women serving around the world in over 200 countries, and in Stark County alone, we have 17 Lions Clubs. In 1925, at their international convention in Cedar Point, Ohio, a lady by the name of Helen Coward, who was blind and deaf, challenged the Lions to become Knights of the Blind in the Crusade Against Darkness. And the Lions embraced this challenge. Since then, our goals have been to help in preventing blindness and preserving the sight of those that need help. Our motto is, "We serve." So as you can see what I mentioned, the services that we can offer, we truly are a service My goal tonight is just to ask the township trustees if they would be possibly interested in supporting and endorsing our efforts to go forward and try and form a new Lions Club. I think one thing we need to do is find a way to notify all the people, some media, set up an informational meeting, and start from there. Takes 20 members to form a new club. There's a one-time $30 charge, and then after that, once they form a club, they can determine their own dues structure. The current club I'm in is Jackson Township Lions Club, and our dues are only $5 a month. So it's a very economical organization. I have some further packets that the trustees would like for your review, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Zweck, I guess the first question I've got outside of the fact, you're getting the whole set of information for us tonight, when you're saying the board's support and endorsement, I mean, are you looking for a formal declaration?
I guess.
Is it a board?
I guess support and endorsement can mean a number of things, so that's.
Maybe I should just say, what I was looking for is your blessing would proceed with forming a club. I don't like to walk into a township or a community and start campaigning to form a club, and you see something in the paper, and you go, whoa, what's this all about? Where'd they come from, and so forth. So, if you think it requires a formal declaration, that would be great. North Canton Lions Club is willing to be the sponsoring club, so we have no conflicts there. I always clarify that first, you get a surrounding club that would be willing to support you. And just neighboring you is, there are Lions Clubs in every township that neighbors you, in every little town, so. Any other questions?
This is more of a statement than it is a question. This board, prior to boards, I think historically worked well with a number of civic organizations, you know. The only phenomenon we've had here in the township has been Rotary. But, I mean, there's other groups that come, like Boy Scouts, Girl Scout troops, and so forth. They fill different niches, different needs, so, I mean, I as an individual, I don't have any reservations about any type of public support or endorsement for this, because you've said, joining townships.
I was concerned about Canton, because it kind of sits in Plain Township, so to speak, and actually, some of their members are from Plain Township currently, so. But they overlap. We have members from Perry Township and other townships neighboring, so.
I'm sure, and we can help connect you with some of the folks in the media. We've got between our newsletter, the school, the North Neighbor News, township-based.
Hey, Brock.
Sure.
We like to work with the schools as possible, because there are certain things we can partner with other organizations and so forth.
Yeah, I believe that my administrative assistant, Linda, gave me a card of yours.
Right.
And we do have partnership meetings with the school, and it would, I'd like to find out the next day of the partnership meeting, and have you come to that.
Thank you.
To talk about this. Brock, do you know off the top of your head when the next meeting is?
November, I would say it's like 19th, maybe?
I'll double check. Yeah, I'll double check and call you, because that'd be a great way to talk about it, and then our winter newsletter just wrapped up, but we certainly could do an article in our spring newsletter, but I know that we have our North Neighbor News, the other media outlets, but by coming to the partnership.
November 19.
It is November 19. At what time, Rob?
9:00 AM, Gleno High School.
At 9:00 AM.
Where is it at?
Gleno High School.
Gleno High School.
Yeah, we can do something in the next issue of the Plain Paper, but coming to the partnership meeting would, you're welcome to meet here and go over with Rob and I.
Okay, about what time?
I would say 8:45.
Yeah.
8:45.
8:45.
And 9:00 AM, maybe?
And is there any way we can get this on the website?
Yes, if you have an article or some sort of communication, I'll call you tomorrow instead of kind of.
Sure, or I can come over and sit down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have 15 minutes.
Yeah, we can just get it on our website and our Facebook and Twitter right away.
One of the newest unique things we have is a preschool ice creamer. It's a state-of-the-art, and it will do within 15 seconds, it'll give you seven different readings of possible problems that a child can have. We currently, in our district, are doing 80% of the ice screenings that's done in the state of Ohio, so that's a separate topic we can talk about. We have our own Eye Care Foundation, which is unique, the only one that helps with surgeries for people that can't afford them, cataract surgeries and so forth.
Just as a point of clarification, and then he was presenting to us, you said, look into review and assess and determine a level of interest here. What I'm hearing, I say, hey, we'll help get messaging out.
Yeah.
I mean, is there a level of comfort on your guys' behalf for us to start incorporating this messaging into our newsletter and so forth? Because I don't want to put the cart before the horse. If you guys are trying to do a review, assessment, and determination on viability, we got to throw the cart before the horse here.
I think from what I'm hearing, you have offered all the support we need right now, and what we need to do is determine a place and time for an informational meeting, and then get that message out.
Yeah, and we can use those resources to get the message out of that.
Typically, during the holidays is not a good time, so I would say after the first year, we can.
Then our spring newsletter.
Make the best concerted effort to do that, so.
Yeah, okay.
And we have various speakers that come and talk, can come and talk to you about our various programs, particularly the seeing eye dogs, the ice screenings, and so forth. Okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming and sitting through the whole meeting.
No problem, I'm used to that.
Does anybody else in the audience wish to address the board? We have some students in the back of the audience that would like to introduce themselves.
Oh, we thought that was, we were all supposed to sign in, so that's why our names are on there.
Okay, you want to stand up and say what, what's your project, or what?
Oh, well, we take honors government at Central Catholic High School, and as part of the program, you have to get 10 service hours, five political and five just regular service, and then you have to attend to public needs every quarter, so this is, that's why we came here to observe and.
Nice having you, and I signed two of your forms, but I can sign yours after. And if you haven't completed, if you're ever in need of service hours, our Parks Department is always in need. So, you can always let us know, there's always events or things that we need in our Parks Department.
Please, please to cancel the extension of the seasonal.
Yeah, we're not gonna put you to work in five minutes if your property mowed, no?
No, but we do have events even as soon as the Saturday, working concessions, or even in the spring, we have an Easter Icon that's fun to work. This December 7th, we have a Christmas tree lighting, a winter fest program, so we do have some fun events that are easy ways to earn community service hours, so keep that in mind.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Pleasure.
Okay, are there any other concerns first? And we're gonna close the public speech portion, we're gonna go Concerns of Trustees, two items on the agenda.
Guys, I'll make this quick. The first was the Akron-Canton noise study. I had sat through a meeting earlier this year with a bunch of jurisdictional entities. I just want to bring up that October 30th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, which ironically, that's gonna conflict with our 6:00 PM joint economic development during the meeting on Jackson Township at 6:00, but from 5:00 to 7:00, the airport, as part of their Part 150 noise study, is open to the public. I bring this up because the whole intent of this study is to allow all the governmental entities that surround the airport and directly interact or indirectly interact, whether it's just, you know, flight patterns, flying over residence areas, it gives us a venue to air any concerns. It will allow them to ultimately go back and say, hey, these are certain things, issues that we've identified, and we're gonna create plans of action to help create noise buffering, so the airport can continue to be a good community partner. So, the fact that it's open to the public, Akron-Canton Airport, October 30th, 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the second floor, in the conference room, they just asked you to book a parking ticket, so they can validate it before you should be able to make it, so that's the only thing I had there. Last week, I sat in a session over Stark State College regarding the vibrant NEO 2040, that's Northeast Ohio 2040. Essentially, it's a vision, or a visionary plan on how to develop the communities and the infrastructure, and leverage each other's assets to get us to where we want to be, not only just as Plain Township, but as Northeast Ohio. Some of the themes they really hit on, it was more so hit on a couple things. Improving the region's fiscal health, talking about regional collaboration, I think something we're all pretty good and familiar with here, but not everybody else is as well. Protecting soil, water, and air. Developing regional economy with accessible employment opportunities. They touched upon a regionalized transportation network, as well as finding ways to cultivate and celebrate local assets, and then expanding parks, open space, and then how we preserve our prime farmland, and they just drilled down, saying, hey, ultimately, we want to continue to focus on strengthening our established communities, discussed, you know, infill and reinvestment, instead of urban sprawl. And those were just a number of things we talked on. I simply bring this up because, you know, we've got a master plan for the township, which is our own, you know, vision that our constituents have provided input on. This takes it to what? We're at the micro level, this takes it to the macro level for a region, and so forth. So, there's gonna be some details in a report that's supposed to be coming out, I think the end of December, the beginning of January, that may be a good asset for us to leverage in moving forward, but I just wanted to report out on it, so. I mean, some of the things you touched on, they're, you know, they correlate with our meeting on 30th, and we're gonna be participating in, and I know there's been some discussions about extending those out now, the Masland Berry, and Lawrence Townships, and some of those other things, so. Good points brought up.
All right, what's next? Approval of events.
Also move on to approval of the October 8, 2013 meeting minutes.
Second, discussion.
Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Okay, is there any for executive? None?
None.
Bigger Christmas cake for you this year.
Appreciate that.
Okay, for order, there's a motion to adjourn?
Awesome, awesome move.
Second, it is now. 7:48, yeah.
Roll call. Mr. Lea?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.